I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, let's see. This lines. Good evening. Do we have anyone to speak?
Uh, yes.
Oh, wait. No, hold on. You can hand it to Mr. Ray. Actually, I handed it out. Mr. Ray, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. One gentleman, Kevin Moncar.
Yep. All right. Good evening. It's my first meeting like this. Just moved to Hampshire. Thank you. Moved to Hampshire four months ago. Like I said, my name is Kevin Moncar. I have a concern that despite the voice, uh, so at my second water bill, I established a yard, and that was $1,800, which was, you know, kind of surprising. Um, but I'm not really worried about how much the water costs, but I won't be surprised if you have other people like me in here or you have in the past, because to my knowledge, if anyone could enlighten me if I'm wrong, but you pay for your water and you pay for your sewage. So your sewage is your outtake from your house. Like you use the shower and the water goes outtake. And, uh, this is how I was explaining when I called the water department, which I will say everyone I talked to was super nice and understanding, but they still, it is what it is type of thing. And I understand that for me. But when, when you're talking about sewage leaving your house, uh, the, your water going in your yard is not going through those pipes. So I know there's other areas. Um, my father-in-law lived in South Belgium. When he told me he was establishing a yard, he got a percentage off. So like they understood that that water going through those pipes isn't, you know, it's not taxing on that system. So, I mean, like just, it just doesn't seem, and I know this is how things happen and things are, and it's a moment in time because, uh, my yards aren't established. But I'm just saying it'd be nice if it was ever considered that when someone says I'm establishing a yard, they get some type of break.
You said that with South Belgium, then you'd said that they-
My father-in-law, when he moved there like 20 years ago, he, like I said, I don't know how it is now, but he said I was establishing a yard.
We had a decent enough relationship with South Belgium all over there.
I would appreciate that, yeah. So, um, but yeah, just to be considered really that if someone's doing that because I know it is what it is, but when it comes to like, hey, we can't tell what water's going where, my bill was, my bill was like $150 the month before, the two months before, and now it's $1,800. It's not, I'm paying for stuff that I'm not even using. So I'm just saying, just in the future, maybe consider something.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for hearing me. And I really, it warms my heart seeing you guys do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
I'll stick around for a minute. I'm gonna see how this goes.
Awesome. Anyone else tonight?
No, sir.
All right. All right, next, before you have the meeting minutes from June 1st, 2023, please review them at this time. Any changes, if there are any to be presented? If there are none, I'll entertain a, uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
Which one? Are you doing June 1st or June 6th?
We're doing June 1st. I have one for June 1st, but I think that was already changed, maybe not. But I'm so glad that it wasn't changed in these minutes, so I get to call it out again. Down at the top, on the bottom of page four. Where did it go? I did see it in here. Trusty Keeley did make another appearance. Oh, there it is. Uh, on the bottom, middle of page five.
Oh, Keeley. I thought it was German.
So thank you for that. Miss Gascoigne. Well, then my computers might do.
I want to have.
Well, trustee Keeley also recommended. For those of you that aren't in the joke, we gave them our time about that the whole meeting. All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for, uh, June 1st with the things that I presented to Mr. Trustee Kelly's name. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hello.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stine.
And Stine.
Mr. Miss Fodor.
Aye.
Motion passed. Oh.
Give you one piece of pie. Okay, next, you have the, the meeting minutes from July 6th, 2023. Please review them at this time. Do we have any changes for the meeting minutes, or if not hearing done, I'll change the motion to approve them as they are presented. So, questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, just a question. I thought on our motion for the motor vehicle wash facility, we had said that it was effective September 22nd, 2023, pending review of the master water plan and the, what was the other thing? Trusty Fodor, we had the master water plan and, oh, the, uh, ability to enforce the regulations. Staff, we looking at the enforcement since it was pointed out that municipality would be-
That is what we discussed. I think we can include that sentence. Just explaining the reason why we needed it.
Yeah, I, it doesn't make a condition, right?
It was. It was that on the 21st-
I listened to the video and I thought they'd say that. So that would give us time to implement those.
If on the 21st we had not seen, reviewed, and approved those, then this would be rescinded.
Yeah, we clarified that with the attorney.
Yeah, that information.
Yeah, we should go ahead.
So we'll just add that, that information.
So do we need a friendly amendment?
Um, yeah. If you want to be friendly about it, let's, you, you made, you made the last one.
Just saying.
So walk us through the friendly amendment thing again, Counselor.
Um, well, there's two ways we can do this. We can either do the friendly amendment, or with the amended for the minutes, we could say, we could just ask that there's no consent to the change because we just talked about it. Um, or you could ask for an adoption of friendly amendment to include the language, the conditional language.
So I will ask for a friendly amendment containing the language that we just spoke. And I just need a second for that, correct? Oh, a second?
Yes.
We don't need to do real quick.
But we need, um, the person who made the initial amendment.
The movement should acknowledge the friendly amendment.
Oh, okay.
So we, trustee Paul Stine, you need to accept the friendly amendment.
Right.
I'm sure. Okay. Okay.
Okay. So now according to Robert's rules, we're covered. And now I will accept, now I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the friendly amendment. Well-
We're good. Right. We're ready for a vote.
Yeah.
Good.
The minutes will be approved as amended.
Yeah. Correct. All right. So I will entertain a motion to that effect. Approving amendments as amended. Motion. At first?
Yeah.
We move the one to make the amendment.
There's no objection to the friendly amendment.
Correct.
And the maker of the motion assented to the friendly amendment.
Yes.
And so now we have the motion as amended for-
So the standing motion is what we're-
Correct.
Right.
So we don't need a-
A subsequent motion.
We're just very-
Correct. We have a first. We have a second?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stine.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Hedges.
Evening. I believe this is the first time we have you outnumbered. We're all here and you're missing one, so.
Done.
We would ask for your consideration of a resolution approving final development plans for the planned residential development neighborhoods J, T, Z, and AA, and Prairie Ridge Development. You have before you an agenda supplement with Josh. You've already approved the plat and, uh, preliminary plat, the development agreement. Josh will go through briefly where we are in the process, and Mr. Olson is here to address the issue.
Thank you for being here tonight. Just want to remind the board that, uh, uh, development process for each neighborhood is three phases, concept, preliminary, and final. Uh, as to, as Mr. Hedges just mentioned, you all approved the preliminary development plans, including plat, development agreement back in March. Um, so this is kind of a transactional resolution that just is a check to make sure the final plans match the preliminary plans for the specific neighborhoods that they would like to proceed with. Um, so there's, there's a few numbers in the packet that you formed through substantial compliance with preliminary plans, staff's opinion. Uh, the review letter from EDI that had a few outstanding items on neighborhood J has already been resubmitted against, and a new review letter was issued today, I believe, right then? And, uh, those comments were addressed?
Yes.
So, uh, staff's opinion that this resolution should be forward.
So what we have in our packet and what we've reviewed is not the most current?
It's as of today, it's not, but you can still approve the resolution as it is, and it will still take the correct effect.
The only thing that's not correct is that the items that were open then are not closed.
So, so can I ask then, like, how did we close storm sewer as shown appears to approach our properties, uh, on sheet 10, sheet 13? What, what exactly were the open items that were addressed, since we don't have that information? And how were they addressed?
I have the older letter with me, but they were items like that. I think you have the letter from July 3rd.
So that's, that's what I'm looking at, is the letter from July 3rd. That's what I'm asking. Those open items, how were they addressed? We don't have any information on, we're just being told they were addressed, but we don't have the latest information on how they were or if that's in the plat or what the different-
So in the case of the one you just read, the storm sewer was adjusted in the handover. In most of these cases on these comments, the village utility needs to be provided. Which one do you need?
Change.
So under final inherent plans, number three, sheet 10 drainage and grading plan. Number four, sheet 13 drainage and grading plan.
Yes, correct. So they, they addressed that, adjusting the location of the storm sewer and providing larger utility.
So then that property, that home, will have more of an easement as a part of that property than other set properties. And then number five, sheet 15 drainage and grading plan.
Uh, they, uh, addressed that by changing the detail, by, uh, for the, uh, path of the, uh, plant stone screenings and that.
Okay. And then the next tier, connection to existing water main structure.
Uh, those were, uh, addressed. I don't recall those, uh, looking at those exactly. I had somebody help me with the review, but those were addressed by calling out connection to the existing water main structure. So these were just, the, the water main was shown connecting to the existing structure, but then we just like to call out there so that it's, it's clear to everybody that that's where the connection is.
Okay, so this is that it wasn't called on the plan, not that it's not connected, because it kind of reads like it wasn't connected. It was shown that the plants as connected.
I mean, the line wasn't connected to the structure, but we had, we wanted to call out so that it was clear that it's happened.
So these are just, these are just, for lack of better terminology in language terms, these are adjustments to the final plat as far as note, notations that, that the village wanted on the plat.
Or, or adjustments to the engineering plans, you know? So, I mean, I mean, the first, our first review letter was similar types of comments, you know, it was 10 pages long. And then they submit, address the comments, and we take those off the letter. And there were a few remaining, and then last Friday, they submitted and addressed these final ones.
So, but, but from what Josh is saying, there was a letter today submitted to staff that staff is comfortable with, that these issues are, these outstanding issues at the time of, at the time that the pack was emailed are addressed.
That was just kind of a matter of fact condition. Would have, if it hadn't come today, would, this would still be the 40.
Okay.
We're just letting you know that these have now been resolved as well.
And then staff, and then, let's say that that letter hadn't been issued, staff is still making sure that what's on this list are-
It will be done in EBI and so on.
Sure. So for my application here or education, how, how do we adopt this resolution?
Just as is.
As is, okay. That, that's what I'm asking. We don't need any other action or anything.
We gave you a little too much information today.
No, that's fine. And that's fine. I just want to make sure that we, we adopt the resolution correctly.
How about a number 8A? Easement should be revised as noted in engineering comments.
Oh, that's the questions that, uh, trustee Kelly was asking, where we were noting, you know, storm sewer didn't have a large enough easement, and rather than repeating those comments in the flat comments, we just said, well, we asked you to change the easement size of the engineering plans, make sure that showed up in the plat. Because that's where it's official.
I, I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
Sorry, I still have a few questions. Is there, uh, because I'm not aware of discussion. I, I can pause away for questions and comments.
No, my, my, my issue with this is we could beat this to death, and staff is recommending that this to us and it's on staff.
But I, but I, but I feel that an elected official shouldn't be able to vet out his questions concerning, concerning changes that we don't have in front of us, other than in writing.
Respectfully, trustee Coe, it was said that the, we did get a letter. Uh, we don't have the letter. We could probably get the letter to this board in rapid fashion.
I have a copy.
Perfect. They're saying that these questions and comments were addressed.
Saying that the engineering plans, we find the engineering plans, we don't warrant, we don't warrant standard engineering practices.
I appreciate the discussion. That's all.
Okay.
I, I trust that you've been saying that it's all addressed and staff says it was, so I trust that. My question is to both you and then, uh, to Crown, who's here today. Is there any difference in the layout of lots and the designs that we have here from what we have seen in earlier drawings to what we're voting on tonight? Is there any difference whatsoever? Uh, there's minus like the easements and some of the two foot here, one foot here.
Those are the differences, right? So the, 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 the final plat that you, you, as part of this, your packet, has not changed except for easements have gotten wider, insert locations.
Okay, but the number of lots, the size of the lots in those neighborhoods, from what we saw in those original big drawings that we all voted on, none of that has changed.
It has not changed after compared to the, the final pass that are included as part of your packet, right? There are some tweaks from the preliminary plat.
That's my question is, this plat here that we have, not, not what you and the engineering team has done this week. What I'm asking is, what we have in our packet versus what we saw in the preliminary?
Yeah.
Are there any changes that have occurred in this outside of easement type changes?
Uh, number of lots have not changed, the minimum size of lots have not changed, the square foot, those kinds of things have not changed. There were, as is often the case, um, from preliminary engineering to, and preliminary plat, to final plat, final engineer, there was some minor changes. I'll give you an example. Uh, in one of the cul-de-sacs, there, we found, um, raw water mains, or saying that well, um, went through lots. It wasn't on any archive information that we had. So we, we added a, a, why, we linked in the cul-de-sac that to add an outlaw for that water, raw water main to go through there. And that's depicted on the plots that are shown in your packet.
And that's more of a utility change. That's not a change to the action.
Number of lots have not changed, the size of lots, those kinds of things have not changed.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? We do have to make an adjustment to the resolution as it, as the resolution title doesn't include neighborhood J as the reference, as the, uh, first where it says, so I'm just like, the, the resolution would have neighborhood J in the title. Questions about the resolution? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. 316, um, we're going to find a development plan for the planned residential development. The neighborhoods J, T, and Z, and AA, and Prairie Ridge.
Is Crown going to talk about it all, or is anyone here today, or can you just check the questions?
I certainly can, um, uh-
I just didn't want to ace them out.
Oh, no, 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 no. Actually, Josh does a much better job than I ever can, you know, explain what it is. So it is really just a, um, it's the next step in the process that Josh mentioned, preliminary plat, the final plat, right? So, um, so really, I mean, I could give a present, another presentation, um, if you wish. I wasn't planning on it. Nothing really has changed since, you know, other than those tweaks we just discussed since preliminary plat. So, um, but I'm, I, I think probably the only thing you may have a question on is why J1 and J2, right? Two different plots. And that's the simple answer. If J1, can you sort of grab these sort? If that happens, you want to get that going. J2 needs the lift station, which we're currently, um, working with the village. Get proposals from your division to your design location. So that's really the only, probably, you may have a question. But I can answer any other questions you may have.
I just had one, and it has nothing to do with the engineer or anything. I was just curious if you started looking or opening up or, um, you know, selling any of the lots yet, or, or talking to people yet, or does it have to wait till all of this is done first?
We are actively, we got an early master grading permit, so we're actively moving first out there, and you probably see. So, um, we can't close out lots until they're done, obviously, but yes, we are negotiating contracts with builders um, to purchase all four of these neighborhoods. I can't say who we are, there are builders you recognize, um, because the contract's not issued yet, but they're very excited about moving forward in these next cases.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Is including neighborhood J. Is the, all the motion is to include neighborhood J?
Right. And, and the rest of the resolution refers to it appropriately, it's just not-
Sorry, just wanted information on that, since, uh, it was just identified that there is a J1 and a J2. Do we need to call that out, or does J cover J1 and J2 since they're being treated as subsidiaries?
There's no J3.
No, it's just, it's, 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 there's, there's, uh, the plat is J, uh, is J. It's J, I'm sorry.
The two subsets are 1 and 2, so we're just saying neighborhood J.
Neighborhood J.
It covers J1 and 2.
Correct.
Got you. Okay. So we were incorrect, we have to.
Correct. We'll make sure that's included in J throughout the resolution, including the title and section 1.
All right. Can I ask? Absolutely. We have another question. So in the village packet, you have the Prairie Ridge neighborhood J.
Right.
I'm trying to make sure I'm not confused on this, and if I, if I ask a weird question, I apologize. Page 14. And so when you're looking at the, the neighborhood itself, you can see the, the two cul-de-sacs and then the ones that go down. And then there's the, I think it's outlaw 99 on the left side, which is a big area. And then when I scroll down, I look at one labeled neighborhood J2. That is a, a, a different drawing. So, does that include J1?
So that, yeah, and, and that's where I didn't do the previous one. So that is the area that, that, uh, outlaw is the area that is served by the list station, right? So the way we, but we want to bring the other area called J1, that is served by gravity sewer on that first plot you're referring to, the neighborhood J plat, that is one plat, but we can't plat J2 because we're not, we're, we're not ready to plat that yet. Although we're, we're, we're ready to plat it, but we're not, we're not ready to build that yet.
Okay, so the, the lines, like, there's a line between 19 and 919, that says L10. Those darker lines is what separates J2 from-
Correct.
The other-
Yes.
J subdivision.
That's right.
But the motion is for that entire area as well to sink.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for helping to explain that. Like, it looks similar, but it's still something else at the top of the plat.
It all has to do with the gravity sewer.
So now we're, we're at a point where if we're comfortable, we can entertain a motion, or we can entertain more questions. This is all stuff that we've seen before, um, through the planning and zoning, and, uh, we, we approved the preliminary plat and then the final development, the agreement and all that stuff, and then this was all contingent on final engineering. So this is really just kind of like a handshake thing. Approving what we've already approved, assuming that the staff signed off on, staff and engineering signed off.
I would move to the resolution.
Neighborhood J in the title?
With J.
Sorry, I'm not trying to coach you on your motion.
That's okay.
This is just for J?
No. I don't have a second yet.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Paul Stine.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for staying here today. Mr. Mayor, well, so you're welcome.
You're welcome to hang out.
Welcome to me.
My bad, I was a bit tired.
Thank you very much.
This is a day you've had a long drive home.
Uh, with that, Mr. Ray, the next two items, I'm actually, the next four items are all carried over from the last meeting. The next two items, I would say, are bracketed items E and C, although you will order them separately. Uh, the first one is a motion to approve the balancing change order for the water main connection project. Um, excuse me, decreasing the contract price by $8,082.68 to total of $9,058,000, but $159.84. This project was completed on time. Very well done, very well recorded, and now the decision.
Does anyone have any questions? Now the numbers all match and I think we should be comfortable. I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance change order for the water main connection project, decreasing the contract price.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stine. I just have a, just a quick question, and I'm not sure, because they're all kind of melding into one really quick though. On page 52, is that part of what we're voting on right now? I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's getting weird.
So it's all right. Then on page 22, it's renumberized with the date of September 2022. Renumberization, September 29, 2022. Shouldn't it be something a little bit more recent like the other ones are?
This was the original change order paperwork.
Was that? Because the two, like, the other ones have been like April or something.
Those are final, those are the final buildings, is what it is. This is the actual original change order.
We got, we got change orders, payments going all the way back to September, much.
Okay, so it does, so that's the original one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, okay. I apologize, I apologize. Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We should pass by.
Thank you. Now we ask you to considerate the motion to approve pay estimate number 8, which came by estimating in the amount of $87,338.59 for work completed on the water main connection project.
project.
So we adjusted. The numbers are correct. Review the information. If I'm comfortable, I will entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number eight to Kane County estimating.
After this, we'll settle at 23,964. So I have one more. Just a minute.
Yes.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
So moved. We didn't know.
Thank you.
Question, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Solder.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stini. Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve the balancing change order for Streetscape project, increasing the contract price by $8,622.28 to a new total of $133,000.72.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
The increase is due to all the change orders?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve the balance, balancing change order for the Streetscape project, increasing the contract price by $8,622.28.
Second.
Question, comments? Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Solder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
We should pass five.
Thank you. Now we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve pay estimate number six, final payment to the alliance contractors in the amount of $20,661.44 for work completed on the Streetscape project.
So this is the final payment to Alliance, correct? Now we hold anything back? This is it?
This is the final payment right in the motion.
Okay.
And I would just tell you that they were a wonderful work with, as you talked briefly a few meetings ago, that we ran into a lot of problems in the street out there, but they were tremendous to work with, brought an extra team to extra crews. It was a, it was a project that everybody pitched in, and we've been answering it Saturday night.
Quick, quick question for you, Mr. Mayor. I know we had to have some of the red faux brick replaced after the first winter season. Is there still any obligation or commitment by the contractor should that occur again this next season? Or is it now out, and we'd have to pay to have it?
No, once, once it's finished, it's, once they're paid off, there's a warranty for that. We did spend some time with them out there, though, and they, including with our plow people, kind of how we avoid these kinds of problems. So we think it'll be good quality work at Alliance.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number six, final payment to Alliance contractors.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Solder. Mr. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
All right.
We should pass five.
Now we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve a professional services agreement with EEI in the amount of $224,944 for the nutrient assessment reduction plan. This is in the fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year '24 budget. This is also a state mandate. I'm just going to make about 20 seconds worth of comments, and then I'll turn it over to Steve, who has a rather lengthy presentation for you. This is a lot of money. This is something that was discussed at the budget meetings, Budget Committee, as well as the Village Board level during the budget process. It's a three-phase program. Honestly, it's, frankly, it's a state mandate that we find rather onerous, but they would have their own choice on. So Steve, with that, why don't you, Josh has a presentation that he'll be showing on the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and take a short name, please?
Steve Dennison with Engineering Enterprises. For those of you who have not seen me before, I handle things, water and wastewater for EEI. I've been working in Hampshire's water and wastewater systems with the staff here since I joined EEI in 2004. Yeah, like Mr. Page just said, unfunded mandates, nobody likes to see them, the reality of the common land, the current landscape with the IIPA, and particularly as it relates to nutrients and receiving streams. So I thought it would be good, given the size of the contract, and staff agreed to provide a little bit of background on exactly what nutrient assessment reduction plans are with the interesting, you know, acronym NARP there. I'll be referring to that as we go through the presentation here. Go to the, yeah, perfect. So what is it? Again, unfunded mandate, you know, favorite term. It's wastewater treatment facilities, MPS permit, which allows you to discharge into the receiving stream. You know, it's dictated by the US EPA and the IIPA, and there's a special condition requirement that was instituted as part of the last permit in 2021 that included this requirement. The purpose is to improve measures, identify measures to improve water quality of streams and rivers throughout a watershed. The IIPA has been implementing requirements in different watersheds based on waterway nutrient-related impairments, if any of those exist in the waterways, targeting point discharges, particularly wastewater treatment facilities, because that's the low-hanging fruit. It's worth noting that facilities in the Fox River and Displanes River watersheds have had this requirement within the last 10 years. So you're not the first ones to get this, and the IIPA has begun targeting the Kishwaki and Rock River watersheds in the last couple of years. So as we move to the next slide, you see the Kishwaki watershed up here. Hampshire's facility is here, and it discharges to Hampshire Creek, which then flows into Coon Creek, which then flows and has a confluence with the Kishwaki River there, and then eventually flows down to the Rock River. So all of these streams are on what the IIPA refers to as the 303D list of impaired waterways. There are impairments in those waterways that inhibit aquatic activity from fish and organisms to live in those waters. Particularly Hampshire Creek's impairment includes torridphosphorus, which is a paramount concern and is a reason why you have this requirement for the nutrient assessment reduction plan. Next slide. The NARP requirements for Hampshire particularly are, again, because of the phosphorus impairment. The requirement includes the phosphorus reductions from the wastewater plant or non-point sources. So what they're saying is you need to look at your wastewater plant, how it impacts the receiving stream, but you also have to look at other impairments. Are there other things happening within the watershed downstream, farm fuel runoff, et cetera, that are also impacting the receiving stream? So they're putting it on the wastewater plant discharge or the MPS permit order to not only look at what their discharge is doing, but what is cumulatively going on in the watershed that might impact nutrients in that watershed. Is that fair?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How far from the wastewater treatment plant downstream is Hampshire responsible for?
Yeah, so I get it. That's a very good question. I'm going to touch on that a little bit later here.
Sorry.
That's perfect. Get it ahead of you, which always means it's a good question. We are going to talk about the limits of, of the study. It requires a schedule for implementing measures to reduce phosphorus, the third bullet point there, and then work with stakeholders in the watershed. Kind of gets to the last point I was making, reaching out to environmental stakeholders, to other groups that have a vested interest in the watershed, and see if there is a, an approach that you can cumulatively agree to that will help reduce nutrients in the watershed. The NARP is required to be completed and submitted to the IIPA by the end of next year, 2024. The possible NARP outcome, so kind of boiling this down into what could potentially happen, where are the ramifications of this at the end? It could result in point source reductions in phosphorus that are not required, which is the optimal outcome for the village. That's the upper left-hand one identified there. So what that means is we could go through this processes, and it could show, which would be ideal for the village, that reducing the phosphorus limit from the wastewater plant is not going to effectively improve the watershed from a nutrient perspective. That the, what that would mean is that you wouldn't have to have a lower phosphorus limit. You already are going to, it's already built into the MPS permit in all communities, and discharges around here already have this as well and are aware of the fact that your phosphorus discharge limit is going to go from 1.0 to 0.5 by the year 2030. We already know that. The question is, is there going to be any advantage to going below 0.5 milligrams per liter phosphorus as a discharge from wastewater plant? What would that do to the receiving stream? Would there be any significant benefit to that? That's what we need to try to understand. So one possible outcome, as we go through the study, we identify that that lower limit is not going to be necessary, optimal, because if you have to go down to a 0.1 milligram per liter discharge, it's going to be very expensive to do the upgrades at the wastewater plant in order to meet that limit. So we want to try to avoid that. Another outcome would be point source reductions in phosphorus are required. That's the non-optimal outcome, and that you would have to institute measures at the wastewater plant in order to do that. Another outcome could be both point and non-point source reductions in phosphorus required. So that would be both at the wastewater plant and also, say, working with farmers to reduce runoff from the farm fields and fertilizers to the stream. There's also another outcome, which is we could do the study, and it could say that there's actually not really a, a big issue with nutrients in the receiving stream. They are, the IIPA is basing the fact that the receiving stream is on the 303D list by very infrequent sampling that they've done over the years, in grab samples. They haven't done any continuous sampling in the creek or any long-term study, which is what we would be doing as part of this, that could actually show that it's maybe the situation's not as bad as they thought. The NARP objectives on the next slide. Establish watershed-specific nutrient targets, determine the most cost-effective point and non-point source phosphorus reductions, identify specific achievable projects, and establish timeline for implementation, and develop a plan for tracking reporting progress. So this lays it out very cleanly there. We'll talk about some of those a little bit more here. So this is the overall scope and timeline. We've already completed a preliminary NARP work plan. So we had an executed contract back in December of 2021, and we worked with a subconsultant GeoSynTech, who we are proposing to continue to work with in the next phase here, who has done NARPs all over the state. And we developed a work plan that we're going to talk about here in the subsequent slides. So that is, that work has been completed. The next phases, the next three arrows there, we are proposing, as part of the PSA in front of you today, that the next step, starting as early as next week, if approved, into October, to conduct industry data monitoring and analysis, so it's collecting that continuous information at points downstream. And then we would use that information using a watershed modeling tool that GeoSynTech utilizes and has been approved by the IIPA to put in different conditions to show what would happen if, you know, the wastewater plant discharge limit was lower. What impact would that have on the receiving stream? What if points downstream, you're able to reduce phosphorus from the non-point source runoff, farm fuels, et cetera? What impact would that have? So that's what the model is going to do. That model is something, again, that is an approved process by the IIPA to show the science that you need in order to make your case. So developing the modeling tools and identifying watershed management scenarios would happen between October of this year, July of next year, and then August to December of next year, would be developing a plan for tracking reporting progress, submitting NARP completed NARP 2 to the IIPA by the deadline. So I want to talk a little bit about the work that, the work plan that was complete that first phase. So we defined preliminary NARP objectives, which we've talked about already, reviewed the background information related to the watershed. So there was a lot of digging into determining what information was already available with the IIPA sampling that's been done over the years, wastewater plant discharges, and looking cumulatively to see if there was already enough information in order to make good sound scientific conclusions that the IIPA would approve, and we could avoid having to do the more comprehensive water sampling and modeling that we're proposing in the PSA. Unfortunately, there was not enough information there in order to do that. The third point here is identify missing components for refined objectives, and then develop the preliminary NARP work plan with a purpose to identify the scope, schedule, and budget for the subsequent work. So that's what we did. We identified what the subsequent work needed to be, that the IIPA was going to approve for that NARP. So the next slides here are actually from GeoSynTech, the subconsultant we worked with regarding that data review. So if you go to the next slide, Josh, thank you. The data review summary. Again, there's very limited, continuous, and discrete water quality data within the proposed study area. There's no flow gauge on Hampshire Creek or in Coon Creek. That's essential. You have to know what the flows are in addition to the water quality in order to properly properly model the stream. So missing that information as well, and then determine that there's additional monitoring that was going to be required to investigate sources contributing to phosphorus-related impairments in Hampshire Creek, Burlington Creek, and Coon Creek. Yes?
What happens to those creeks during the deluge of rains we get? And the creeks are very, very, so slow, and all of a sudden they become raging rivers? All that chemical from that way is coming to this.
It's flushed down, right.
So how can we get accurate readings on our discharge at the plant when we have those once-in-a-while flows?
Yeah, so, and that's what we are anticipating, being able to collect data from one of those flows during this period to be able to plug into the model. And it would help us understand exactly what would happen, what the impact of the wastewater plant discharge is versus the slug coming down there, like you said, that's being washed down the creek. So I'll, I'll have a map here that'll show where the proposed sampling locations are that I think will help you visualize that a little bit better. In fact, if you just want to go ahead, a couple of slides here, Josh, to the proposed NARP study area. So the Hampshire NARP study area ends at the confluence of the Kishwaki River and Coon Creek. So that would be up here generally. So what that means is this area in green here, that's the watershed that we're concerned about. That's what our responsibility is for this study. The area in purple there is there's a handful of other wastewater plant dischargers that discharge into that branch of the Kishwaki River, including Huntley, whose NARP we are actually finishing up right now with them. So you have Huntley and Ringo and Woodstock. So they are contributing to that branch of the Kishwaki River, but Hampshire is the only point discharger in this, in the Hampshire Creek and Coon Creek watershed area. So you have to show what your impact is when the wastewater plant discharge through that entire stretch until you meet up with the confluence of the Kishwaki River there. So that, that is the proposed study area that we need to cover for some of this project.
So walk me through this, because the wastewater on that map is at one far end of that watershed. At work, if we measure the phosphorus coming out of the wastewater, then we know what the total amount we are contributing is.
Correct.
Why are we studying and having to, as you showed earlier, work with stakeholders throughout the rest of that watershed that's not even within our legal, like, we can ask them to do things, but we have no legal authority over 90% of the people in that area?
How are we? In this area?
Yeah. That's not village, that's right.
It is not village limits, and I completely agree, but the IIPA has made this a watershed requirement, and it, it's more than just a point, your point discharge. They are making the point discharge. They are making the point discharge. The only thing you're responsible for are any changes to limits of the wastewater plant. You will not be responsible for reinforcements of the plan.
So my question is, coming out of the wastewater treatment plant, we're at, uh, 1, 1, 0.1 per liter, but downstream we're at 5 or 10. So do we go back to I E P A and show them that our discharge is within the proper limit? But all the farmers along the way?
Exactly.
Are all that?
Yes.
Are the ones dumping it and get the I E P A to go after them? They're not us?
They're putting, essentially, if you look at it this way, they're putting the burden of proof on the village to show that you are not negatively impacting the watershed. Is that, is that another way of looking at it that, that makes sense to you?
That's why I'm still confused on this and I know this is not going to change any of it, but if we can prove that we're within that 0.5 range that's required by 2030 or 1, and then we have applied to 0.5, or even if we're below that level, I think, I, one of my questions was going to be where we're at currently because we have to monitor.
1.0 milligrams.
That's where we're at right now. We stay right.
Well, that is what the limit is, but you're actually discharging less than that.
Right, that's what I mean.
And we have that information, we're plugging, we're going to plug that into the model.
So what, so what happens to I E P A if we show them a quarter mile downstream? We're well below the, their, their limit, but two miles downstream or whatever that distance is, it's three times that. Can we go back to them and show, it ain't us, it's all the people?
That's exactly what we want to show them. So that they will not be able to lower your discharge limit. That's what we're trying to get out of this as the optimal solution for the village. Is we have to prove that lowering the phosphorus discharge from the wastewater plant is not going to significantly improve the stream quality.
And so what's the burden of proof, if you will? Like, how do we, how do we go about working with farmers downstream, say there is an issue?
So there's, there are mechanisms and that's what we're going to investigate as part of this plan to work with, um, stakeholders in the watershed. And we have to figure out exactly who those are. Correct is one that comes to mind. Um, there are environmental stakeholders in the area. Sierra Cloud isn't tremendously active in this watershed, but, um, there are others.
Can you explain who those are? We don't know.
Yeah, there, there are environmental stakeholders that have a vested interest in streams and creeks and trying to keep them healthy.
But what are they? Are those companies? What?
There, there are independent organizations, nonprofits, um, that, that go about doing that work. I'm not intimately familiar with them. Um, I've worked with them one or two.
The village is not going to be in a position to go out and negotiate with farmers to reduce the.
No, no, you're not.
What we're going to do is we're going to prove that this is from fertilizer. This phosphorus is coming from fertilizer, which everybody knows. We're just going to prove that. We're going to spend $300,000 instead of making the farmers prove it. And then the farmers are going to.
Your lobby is sometimes powerful.
Well, no, and I, and I understand that. My, my question is that that's a, that's a huge swath of land and watershed that we're being told that our one discharge, and that's why I was asking, if our discharge level is well below where it's at, where it needs to be at, why would we still study the rest of the area when you can't go much lower than theoretically?
Well, we have to show it until the confluence after the Kishwaki River because there's no other point discharges in there.
So on the other watershed, are those three communities splitting the cost of that study now?
Uh, so Huntley did, they're, they're own.
For that entire watershed?
They did it for the branch that goes all the way to here. And then once it got here, there's other dischargers that are, that are discharging in. You know, they, they, they were able to show that, um, their, their limited responsibility ended at that point. Now, these other communities, I'm not sure how many of them are in it, but there's a Rock River Watershed Group that a handful of them have joined together. Uh, but we looked at that and it was actually going to be more expensive for the village to join that group with everything that they're doing rather than just doing this on their own. Plus they weren't having the village's vested interests at heart, you know, and every, a lot of people having their opinions in the watershed group, whereas you have, um, you know, a specific target here that you want to meet. Um, so I, I understand what your, what your question is.
Because I'm looking at that, it's not, nothing we can change. I, I get it. I'm just airing my.
Right.
Concern is that that little box at the top says Belvedere Township. That's how far we're going on.
How long do we have to monitor this?
So we're going to be doing sampling for about three months to get enough data in order to do a viable model that the I E P A will prove.
So we can, we can monitor our discharge for three months and go up to the end and monitor the complete discharge?
Yeah.
And then we can go to I E P A in three or four months and show them that it's upstream and not us?
What, so if you want to skip ahead, because I think a lot of this is kind of covering, there's another map and a couple of slides.
Skip, is that a yes?
E, yes. So this, what I wanted to show here and to kind of answer that is here's the proposed sampling locations. We're going to be taking, uh, here's the wastewater plant here. There's going to be devices that are going to be installed in the receiving stream to collect water quality and flow information, uh, from a few different points. One is this point here, which is going to collect, um, the flow downstream of the wastewater plant discharge, but before Burlington Creek comes in. And then we're going to, because that's a fairly significant tributary, we're going to also collect the information right after that to see what the impact of Burlington Creek is. And then we're going to move downstream, uh, to a point here where after Spring Creek comes in and see what the impact of that tributary is. And so those three points are where we're going to be collecting information. Now, we are also going to be getting information from that location up there. We've reached a verbal agreement with the Rock River Watershed Group who was placing a device there to collect that information to get that for use in our studies. So we can see what the impact is of the Hampshire Creek, Coon Creek versus after the confluence with the Kishwaki River.
But isn't that also after the other major tributary that Merango and Huntley are studying?
Correct, correct. So it's, it's on the Kishwaki. It's after this branch comes in, but it will still show what the impact is before and after, uh, Coon Creek comes into the Kishwaki River. So all that to say, I don't need to go into a whole lot of detail, honestly, about, um, some of these other things in the, in the slides here, uh, because I think we've already gone into the detail through the conversation here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
GeoSynTech is putting in 1, 2, 3 monitoring?
Correct. Yep, they're putting in three and then the Rock River Watershed Group is putting in that one as well as some others downstream in the Kishwaki and in the Rock River.
Can you talk to us about what it means to put it in? Is it a remote device that physically goes in and you leave it alone?
Yes, but you have to, you have to come out and make sure that sediment hasn't filled up over it. There's some, uh, some checking in that you have to do on a routine basis to make sure that it's.
How often is it routine?
Uh, weekly, um, to make sure that it's still collecting the information and to download the information from it. Uh, because it doesn't have a communication device on it that's automatically going to send it, uh, somewhere. So.
So that's weekly for the three months?
Yeah, correct. Yep, so they'll be out there doing that, collecting the information. Um, and again, it's going to be collecting flow and water quality, uh, information.
And then they take that data and then download it locally every week?
Right.
They're going to load it into the database?
Correct.
And run it through their modeling tool, which I'm guessing is a modeling tool they use for any kind of study.
That's correct. Well, 2K is what they use.
Yeah, it's not like it's, they're building their own.
Correct.
It's just for this, it's an existing tool.
That is.
They're just going to load the data, say, run the model, and does that, here's the output.
That's correct.
And then there's probably little levers that they can pull in there to say, what if?
Yep.
And then see what the results were.
Correct. The one missing piece of information there is we also have to plug in wastewater plant discharge level and water quality into it as well. It's also critical part of modeling.
One of the reasons why I'm asking these questions, just to make sure it's clear, is that if we have in front of us tonight, 90% of that cost goes to GeoSynTech.
That's absolutely correct.
Over $200,000. I'm trying to understand what that is.
Yeah, and this is very similar to, so we just, as I mentioned, we're finishing up the Huntley NARP right now. It was very similar, uh, project scope and cost there. Um, it's similar to what they've done in displays and Fox River watersheds, uh, for the NARPs down that way. Unfortunately, because the burden of proof is put on the community and the I E P A has certain standards from a scientific information perspective that they need in order to show that proof. Um, it requires the data collection, which is a great majority of the cost. Um, is the, the instruments, you know, having the instruments, doing a monitoring of the instruments, downloading it, doing data cleaning because you have to go through and make sure it makes sense. Everyone's going to get blitzed, okay, does that make sense? No, we need to throw it at that point, so on and so forth. And then going into the model, obviously, is the second most.
And then they use that equipment on their next.
Uh, correct. So we're not paying, we're, we're paying for the rental of the equipment. We're not paying for the actual, the, the actual equipment's a lot more expensive than.
And are there other agencies that provide this type of service?
Uh, there are one or.
That I E P A approved for these kind of studies?
Uh, I, yes, there's one or two others that we use them as a sub, sub consultant um, on another study and it was, it was the same cost that, that we got here. So, yeah, again, we're, we're collecting information related to nutrients, so algae and chlorophyll and, um, and dissolved oxygen, things of that nature. And then they're going to plug it into the model, uh, with the flow information that we get. So if we go to the, was effectively the last slide here, Josh, uh, one before that. Effectively the last one. Um, the proposed, uh, PSA, just want to highlight a couple of things here. So this is the remainder, this is the work scope for the remainder of the NARP. Um, so it includes everything that is required to finish it up by December of 2024. Uh, the goal obviously is to avoid, uh, the costly lower phosphorus discharge limit. If that's the silver lining, uh, you know, it's, you're, you're spending a bit of money, no doubt about it here, to potentially and hopefully save a lot more money down the line by not requiring you to implement additional measures at the wastewater plant for a lower discharge limit. Because without this proof, almost certainly the I E P A is going to come back and say, you didn't show us enough, your discharge limit is going to be 0.1 milligrams per liter. That's, that's the danger here of, of not doing this. In addition to its requirement at this part of the G M P S permit, you have to do something. Um, scope again, a similar other NARP projects, you know, that we've done, that others have done, uh, methodology approved by the I E P A. And I mentioned this before, but we're going to be exchanging data with other wastewater plant dischargers in the Rock River watershed, uh, for their NARP to get a more comprehensive view of what our watershed is doing to the overall Kishwaki River watershed downstream. So. Yeah, I think that's it. I think that's all that I wanted to highlight there. Um, there were a couple of other things, but I think I, we touched on them through the Q and A uh, that's been ongoing. I thank you for your questions and happy, happy to take any more at this time.
I just have one question. You live and breathe this, so, and thank you for answering a lot of my questions. I hope this study's going to go down throughout Illinois, not necessarily E E I's, but just in general. On average, what's the percentage of times that it's the actual wastewater treatment facility that has to lower their standards versus what they're running down?
I, I couldn't confidently answer that because I haven't tracked all the watersheds. Uh, displays in particular, I'm not sure what the results of the displays of the watershed studies were. The Fox River watersheds, I'm not aware of any facilities where the outcome was that they were going to need to lower their discharge limit. And Huntley's model shows that lowering their discharge limit wouldn't do anything effectively to the receiving stream. I won't guarantee, but I would strongly suspect that, that this sampling and modeling is going to show the same thing for Hampshire. Yep. Thank you. Yeah, anything else?
No. Again, we thought it was important that, that Ford understood what they were spending $224,000, almost $25,000 on, even though it's a state mandate.
I have, you know, we went through this in Huntley too, and it was a lot of the same shaking of heads and, you know, it, it is, it's, it's very unfortunate the way everybody has, who's gotten this requirement in their F P S form, which is a lot. Now you've gone through displays, Fox River, now you're going through the Kishwaki River watershed, down through the Rock River watershed. You know, a lot of facilities are getting this requirement. Everybody's trying to fight that against it and nobody's been successful. Um, which is something unfortunately everybody's learned.
Funny, and I appreciate that. I think, and I know we're being recorded, so I'm still going to say this. Has these communities shown that we're doing what we're supposed to do with our wastewater treatment facility? I would hope that there's also then going to be an expectation on the I E P A to then action those that are causing these higher levels. And that it doesn't just go away to say, well, the communities, the villages, the cities, the, the towns are doing what they need to do, so we're all good. We're just going to move on.
You would hope that at a minimum, like you said, the information gathered would be utilized and turned around and shown to other groups of, and ideas come up with to actually act. Precious, yes. Well said.
Does anyone else have any questions?
If I could just sort of better understanding that with just the process itself. Not the science part of it, but the fact is that E E I is kind of, is heading this off for us. And then the other entities doing all the actual sampling, et cetera.
Yeah, correct. So our familiarity, obviously, with, uh, the wastewater plant, with the watershed, generally speaking, village staff and working through NARPs at this scale before, um, will help with the facilitation and data analysis and Q H U C, obviously, of the information, uh, with the village's best interests in mind. GeoSynTech is basically doing all the labor associated with collecting the information and doing the modeling. And that's a great majority of what this project is.
And that's included in the whole, you know, contract and everything else?
Correct.
And then, I mean, because I remember we've done this before. So, you know, if you're already doing some of the work now and we have a contract in front of us, you've already been doing this for us.
Not this, not this work. What we have done previously, um, you mean in relation to the NARP or something else?
Yeah, it could be, because you've done all this work already.
Well, what, what we've done is identified the gaps of data. Now we have to fill in those gaps.
Okay, so.
This, this project in front of you tonight is filling in the gaps.
So we had an earlier contract then that got you started with the work plan, et cetera. And so then this is a subsequent contract that'll take us the rest of the way.
Correct. And that first contract looks like 2021?
Okay.
Right.
But I think that, but I think that was back in 2021, this work.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, because I remember that part of it, but just not the specifics then. So then this will take us the rest of the way to finish it. So in essence, then, well, on, on.
Unless there's. Unless there's, unless there's action that we need to take at the end of it, that would be a separate cost that we would incur.
If something the I E P A would have to tell us, like, we have a mandate yet.
So regardless of the results, we don't really know what's going to happen.
That's right.
Sounds like you all, right?
We're spending a quarter of a million dollars. It could have been a real good snowplow. Um, or dump truck or.
Quarter of a building.
Yeah, okay, okay. You know, it just, I'm just trying to kind of pull together all the pieces and we understand it's with the mandate to do it, so, okay.
It's easier dealing with a couple hundred utilities than it is a few thousand farmers, which is where all this is coming.
I, I really appreciate you coming in and helping us with our questions.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you.
All right, thank you.
I'd also like to point out, you know, we talked about phosphorus last week, or last meeting. Um, phosphorus is great when you're trying to grow bigger crops and increase your stuff, but, you know, it's just going to cause problems if we just keep adding it into our water. Um, we're about to be asked to spend close to half a million dollars tonight. And I didn't hear anybody complaining about any of that and we've done it almost every time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this might be an unsaid mandate, but, um, I'd like my kids and my grandkids to be able to drink some water, so I'm okay with this. Uh, I'm sorry, I know it's, people don't like to be told what to do and I get that, but, um, our environment is kind of important, so I think we can stop.
I don't necessarily have a problem with completing the study because I tend to agree with you. I think that, you know, if there's a problem, we should address it.
I have a problem with the land.
Well, that's, that's the issue that I have. And, and when the state comes along and says, okay, That's, that's the issue that I have, and, and when the state comes along and says, okay, you guys need to do this study, and then you need to work with farmers that are outside your boundaries, I mean, like, some of this just doesn't make sense, or the net is something I don't.
The best part of this is when the study is done, and we can look at this and go.
Right.
And we told you it wasn't us, and here's the data to prove it. And, you know, okay, now what do you want us to do? Okay, so let's get a plan together and let's fix it. So we can be part of the solution, and we can sit there and say, we told you we weren't the problem, let's get the solution together.
We have hard enough times, you can try to get our residents to follow what we say. Like, like telling a bunch of non-residents that they're the problem, that's where I see that this is going to turn into an issue. And so I hope that by that time the state comes up with a.
Because you know how much people will be told what to do. Here we are.
So. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just if we have to, I mean, if it's found that we have to do something and to fix it, I mean, do we have like a ballpark of what that would cost? I mean, I mean, are we talking like between $500,000 and, you know, a million? I mean, do we have any clue what it's cost anybody else?
Mr. Dennison, you did say that we don't know what we're going to be expected to do at the end of this, so I think that that's going to be the issue. It's like, we don't know what their threshold is. We know in 2024, he said that our, that the limits are, it has to be cut down in half, but we're already discharging at a lower rate, as far as we understand.
You're not going to have a problem meeting the .5 limit.
Okay.
But if you have to meet .1, it's going to be problematic. It's going to be millions of dollars.
What are the three top questions?
That's it.
That's, that's part of the study that, that I'm more upset about, is that there's a whole lot of unknowns, that we're, we're being asked to do something, and then we're asked to provide data, and then we don't.
The state of Illinois is using other communities to help fund and let, help them figure out the unknowns. They always have.
And so that, that, I just don't want to mistake my, my aggravation with this. I don't. Anyway. Does anyone else have any questions, or can I entertain a motion to approve the motion, the motion to approve the professional services?
No.
I still have questions on the contract itself.
Okay, well, this is great. Professional segue. Questions or comments?
Okay. I'm going to start with page 77, where we talk about the term, and, and I know we have to do this, so I'm just trying to get this clarified, because it talks on B about the term, says that we, we can terminate by either party within seven days. And on page 84, the termination is maybe terminated for convenience without cause upon 14 days written notice on that part of the contract. So do we need to clarify that, that the first one is for cause? Or note for convenience upon 14 days and for cause with seven days written notice?
Can you just go through that again? So you're.
I'm looking at page 77.
On the term.
It gives the term, and it says upon seven days written notice, and then if the conflicting brings you to page 84.
Sure.
Which says for convenience without cause upon 14 days. So it just seems a bit complex with the origin, with the agreement on page 77. So I just didn't know if we needed to update the term B on page 77, you know, until terminated by either party for convenience upon 14 days and upon, and for cause upon seven days written notice, if it needed to be mentioned in both places, because otherwise it's, it's either seven or seven.
It looks, it's, I'm, I'm not a contractor, but it looks like.
I think our village attorney's just mulling it over right now.
Yeah, go on. No, no, but you were, these are the terms of your standard terms of agreement, so it is 14 days for, for convenience, then seven days on there. We can obviously change the language to track between the language in page, on page 77, section B, to track this, but.
What are we tracking?
The 14 versus the seven.
And is that first one on page 77, is that for cause? Because the other one says for convenience without cause, not page 84.
Correct. There is, there is some of a conflict, and there obviously is a more specific, one's for cause, one's not. But one doesn't qualify whether it's for cause or not. Would you mind clarifying language in that page?
What would the village, like, what would they prefer the language to say?
Whatever's easiest.
And I, it's, it's truth.
They're not attorneys, so that's not their role to, I'm not, let's just make the motion whatever one of you, you guy doesn't like it. I'll have to.
We just need to put for cause on the first one, you know, and adding that it's for cause, and then on page 86, or, or 84, it already says for convenience without cause. So if we can at least put for cause on that term on B.
All I see is that I see a difference between non-terminating party in B, and then, and on page 84 specifically, it specifically calls out the engineer. And I don't know what difference that means, but I, I see that there's two different parties referred to in both of those terms. So I, I don't, because one is referring to the non-terminating party, on termination, the contractor should be contacted, so I think we would be the non-terminating party. And then the other one says it's specifically calling out the engineer, so the village gets seven days, the way I read it, and the engineers get 14. Unless I'm, I'm reading this backwards.
Yeah, it's just they don't, there's a harder, give me one second. There is a, there's a more complex issue on that, because the language doesn't match up, okay? Because there's a 14, J. Sec., there's a 14-day convenience. So in my reading of that, the more specific rules over the more general. There is always an ability to terminate for seven days for cause. Then you go to a more specific provision that it says 14. And I, Jay's right, they're not lawyers. I'm comfortable with that interpretation, and I'm sure that the contracting party will be as well. So you can terminate for any reason within 14. But if you read these two in conjunction for them to make sense, you can terminate with seven for cause only.
But it doesn't say for cause on there.
It doesn't then, correct, on page 77.
Yeah.
But then it bleeds into page 84, where it only talks about cause. So there is an interpretation of that that makes sense, that says the only way you can terminate for convenience is 14 days.
So it's just assumed that, that the seven days.
Well, that's the only matching, well, that's the only matching contractual provision. It's not, I mean, no disrespect, it's not artificially drafted, right? You would say 14 days, no matter what, and then it doesn't matter whether it's cause or don't. But I don't want to get into a long, deserted, easy. Yes, so the understanding being, and we can put, we've got a motion on the table, but the understanding being that any termination can happen for 14 days, whether convenience or cause, but a termination for cause can happen within seven days. And I'm comfortable with that being a conjunctive reading between pages 77 and 88. Without a limit. Are you comfortable with that, Trustee?
That's fine.
Right.
We've kind of, it's on the record here.
It's on the record.
About it.
Precisely.
And it is our agreement.
And it's a reasonable interpretation of these two somewhat.
It's been made.
Right.
It already gets.
It's been made, this is just clarifying a contractual provision.
Okay, so we have first and second. We have any other questions?
You don't need to change anything.
Yeah, but this is the part of the contract, so we already talked about the project, this is the contract itself to, for the quarter of a million. On page 92, the payment, the compensation for the services, and I just wanted to get some kind of clarification then on, let's see, 1A, 2. And reading the two together, it's, it's 90% of, of it's going to be divided, what that total is, 90%, and it's going to be given per month as we go, based on the work that is performed that month. Number two says a sum which, together with the compensation paid, and the one I just explained, equals a 100% of the total compensation, which is due and payable immediately after the award of construction contract is approved. So does that mean that we're, you know, that 10% is, is due 100, like, incomplete at the signing?
I thought A1 says, when work is actually completed, an invoice.
That's 90% of it.
Correct.
But it's supposed to be divided, so they get something each month, and they, they take that number out, 90%, because you already kind of know what they're going to be doing each month, it's divided. But it's that, that 10%, when it says due immediately after the award of construction contract is approved by the authorities, makes it sound like you did, that whatever that leftover 10% from, you've got 90, you've already pulled out, and that 10%, is that due when we sign this contract today, or is that?
No, we do on completion of our final study. It's one of the, it's for.
It should have, to clarify it, it should have been noted after the project work is completed.
Okay, because, I mean, but it says due immediately.
Yeah, I understand.
After the order of construction.
This would be if it was standard for, like, if it was a water main project, we have its complete set of design plans, goes out to bid, you award the contract, you get the remainder of our signed fee. That's what the standard language that Steve mentioned, it should say completion of the project instead of.
And that's what your interpretation of that phrase is for that section.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not that the village is going to get a check, a bill for $22,494 upon approval? That was not.
No, it's in the record that they know what it is, and they'll opt it.
I think this is my last question. Now, on page 97, we switch from engineer and owner to agency loan audit and loan recipient. And I got confused, because we're not taking out any loans here. So example number seven at the bottom, the loan recipient shall have the right to announce payment. So I didn't.
That's just if we're borrowing money, which just, it doesn't apply in this.
It doesn't apply, but we're just using a boilerplate.
Correct.
Anyone else? Ms. Cuthbert, roll please.
Spohy. Hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Knight.
Hi.
Mr. Coles, too. Hi. We should pass by.
Thank you. That would have asked consideration in organs, since it made the intersection, Gastro and Highbrook, the avenue of stop intersection. This is the entrance into the engineer school, and now the tanks are, has a lot of residents and students crossing now. The high school has now extended the sidewalk up to the intersection, just completed that work in the last 30 days. So now we'd like to get, we are for the first time now asking you to authorize the stop sign, we usually just per month, we're supposed to have you authorize them. We talked about this a while back, we'll be coming back with a plan for it, and stop rates and all the stop signs out there. But this is a new one, and an important one, at the high school, directed with the high school on this, if Davis Regional signs up with the structure tomorrow, or probably Monday, certainly the whole school starts upon approval. We'd ask your considerations. You do have in your packet an engineering study, it's done by EEI, that is required in order to justify things.
Something that Stephen up there, this is state.
The states fly in and out of that.
Yeah, right? Well, we had people come speak to us over the years about it as well, here in open sessions.
Dave and, and Chief Cam, Dave Star and Chief Cam, both of them observed and had input into this.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but do you guys have any questions? Just one.
It's, it looks like it's a little over 600 feet from the Big Timber Gastro intersection. So during the peak times of schools, kids and parents going to school or leaving school, what do we estimate the traffic impact on Big Timber and people waiting to turn in because of the.
I actually considered that, we were concerned about people coming in, stopping, and, and packing up, we observed that, it was observed in.
Yeah, there was never any observation backup from affecting Big Timber. There was backup in the intersection at the time when the school buses were leaving, the school buses would drop the kids, and they kind of leave together, and on that turn onto the access road, turning radius, parents can no longer turn into the parking lot to drop their kids off. So it was backing up to the Gas Highbrook intersection, but not of gas to have any impact on Big Timbers, and we think this. This, along with the school's improvements, puts a stop sign on their turbo road for the buses, will, that will, you know, improve that problem, I guess, and I worked and not cause any additional problem.
So that the stop sign being added to Gaston Highbrook, what you're, what I'm hearing you say is, in the mornings in particular.
Right.
Where people are turning in off of Big Timber in either direction into that one entrance to go in, that it is your opinion that adding that stop sign there will not cause cars to back up onto Big Timber in that direction?
In fact, that was a concern that some of us had internally, and they would have studied it, but it's not.
And the problem that it is because, I'm sure, go ahead, I've already asked questions.
When the buses are leaving, when they're all loaded up in the afternoons, for example, the buses tend to leave from this parking lot, and once they are ready to go, they kind of go in caravan style, and they do not stop here or here.
They will now.
So what is the plan?
There, the school is in their sidewalk plan, which is attached to the study, they're putting a stop sign at that intersection.
Are they going to obey that stop sign now? Because they just go.
They used to have.
Well, there is no stop sign.
They used, they used to have one there on the corner, on their property, they had one there for a long time, and then all of a sudden they took it down.
Well, but they just, now, they just, when it's time to go, they just, the whip.
If we have to send a police officer up there, we will, but there's a stop sign they have to sign.
Okay. I'm just wondering how that's going to impact traffic, because.
It'll impact your lights.
The traffic here and here is forced to stop, and the bus, the buses here just continue, and they just.
If the buses are going, you know, one at a time instead of.
They don't go one at a time.
Well, the kind of the school, I'm hoping that what reason the school is putting a stop sign there is to force them to do, it's in, it's in their plans, they said it.
This, this was done with the superintendent's office, and it directed transportation for the high school, so we.
So did anybody expect a.
They don't do their job, then it's a problem.
Okay, but Durham has been informed as well.
Who?
Durham, that's an, that's an internal thing. We'd assume, we'd assume that the district has informed their people.
Well, it's not.
No, they're, some of these stop signs, they're putting up on their property, so they have to work with their transportation. We're only concerned about the ones that we're putting up on.
Just the intersection.
And so if you look, they're putting up stop, they're putting, what I'm saying is is that.
That's their contractor, so.
That's their, like, realistically.
We hold them liable for their contract.
Okay, just wondering, because I've been at the.
Or I should say liable response.
Right.
I can ask one question, this is sort of cheap, I mean, and, and I'm supportive of this, but because of where Highbrook comes across, that's not Highbrook, that's the school street, so even if those buses blew through that stop sign, would you have authority to be able to ticket the bus driver or any other driver there, because it's not a.
Are you talking about the stop signs at Gaston Highbrook?
No, 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 the one on the school's property. So it's, so it's really, it's not enforceable, it would be a school issue, kind of like when you get in an accident or parking.
She's tight, she's tight and bustle.
Why do you think the gas one, but, but, I'm just trying to find, I mean, is it enforceable?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the other one then, because it's another red dot, that's why, and I know that's the school doing that one.
The buses don't stop during the stop.
Yeah, they just, so you could ticket the buses that intersection, but if they just blow through the.
The one on the school property, you know.
That's.
They're not moving so fast.
Like a base.
There's also a lot of high school kids racing out of there.
Okay, that's.
That doesn't.
Relating to our old police story. Does anybody else have?
Does anybody else have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 23-08, designate the intersection of Gast and Highbrook a stop intersection.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you call the roll?
Ms. Spohd. Aye. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Street, aye. We should pass five.
Stand for boards. Oh, this could be a good one, Mr. Paul's is here.
Any questions?
Hold on to that one.
Two questions, the lights, when do they get turned on?
As they are turned on.
Who's responsible for that? Cause they, they were wired.
The only department of transportation.
I don't, and comment, I don't know what their communication is. But they're all installed and ready to go, I don't know what.
All I know is last time, we, last time we asked about the lights, Jay said he had no idea.
They're not up the next day. I have no idea.
We're going to laugh with tomorrow night when they're on.
They've already, they've already told us what the programming is. I think I reported that here a few months back. How it's going to be programmed and all that. I'm sure they're waiting to find that.
I mean, it looks great.
It's gonna be, yeah, be nice when the real lights get unwrapping. I drove there, there this morning, fully expecting them to be unwrapped.
Um, somebody sent me a picture of the new lights and they said, what's with the hammer? It's like. It's, it's the light control for the.
Yeah.
It's not a camera. The village did not put up a camera.
Say that to the.
Ticket cam.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet.
It's, it's for the light control for the emergency vehicles. So just, it's open session. Now I can't.
Mr. Paulson, just two quick questions. Um, under current village projects, the utilities master plan, and I know coming through, um, you're preparing for the presentation. Do you have an estimated time, like two months from now, six months?
We have a meeting with staff over the final. Final, you know, results on Monday, or Friday morning, August 4th, at which time we will set.
Back to that, we'll just be looking for a date, we'll probably have a special board meeting or dedicate a full meeting to.
Okay.
It's going to be a long one, so you're going to want to eat before you come.
Okay, so it's coming then.
It's going to be more of me, sorry.
The second question is, is on page 121, just, um, the development projects that are in Stanley North, the TRZ cell storage. That project's been, like, two years, doesn't seem like it's doing anything and it's been about two years, does it hold up on it or?
I speak to that, Tim's not really involved with this.
Okay.
They were waiting for a long time for the prices of buildings to come down. And then they finally pulled the trigger on the buildings and when they showed up, they just threw them up and heard, you can see they, they can start last Friday.
There are some of them that are up.
Oh, they're almost all.
Okay, I haven't been down there in like a week.
It was going really slow because they were waiting for buildings to come in.
Okay.
Also, they have a very small construction company that does all of their work, it's a one man company, so we set everything up, so it takes them a little longer.
I have a question about something I don't see. The intersection near Big Timber Elementary, I know they were talking about wanting to get up before the school year started, like a couple of weeks.
The signs are up now, I saw the signs were up today and I spoke with Kurt Necker, he expects them to go up. Is this the week of the 24th? That's next week, next week, week of 24th, next week.
For the.
Stop, stoplights should be in next week.
Okay, that's why, because I didn't see it on the project, so I didn't know if EBI is involved in that or it's just King County doing it all.
Oh, it's just King County.
Okay.
Uh, they, they, they took on the project and did it themselves because they could do an existing contract, it's going a lot faster. And I think I mentioned this also, schools still hasn't sent the letters out yet, I haven't seen them, but they were supposed to go again yesterday. For the third time, they will also be busing students from Lakewood to Great School. So we're going to have a crosswalk, we're going to have a stoplight, and we're going to have a school bus.
And a cross.
And a cross.
And a cross.
So that's going to be. I won't go ahead, I'm just going to say, I think it'll be well, well.
There are lots of options.
Yes.
Anyone, any other questions for Mr. Paulson? Thank you for being here today. And Mr. Dennis. Chief Vance, do you want to walk us through your presentation or do you want us to look it over?
I was looking at the clock.
What do you guys want to do? You want him to talk or you want to look it over?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
All right.
I'm going to graduate at the ninth grade, I think.
I'm trying to make it self-explanatory.
All right. It's a great report, you did a great job.
Is, if that can ask what the alarm response is, because it doubled from last month. Is that the school is out and the people aren't going into the buildings and setting them off again?
I'm not sure, I'll say yes.
I'm, I'm going to go with you.
It's all the school teachers come in and try to get the supply to them by themselves, right?
We're not going back in the buildings, that's what I'm saying.
It's the new teachers that want to get in and are excited about it.
And they've done with the system.
Okay, you have any other questions, Doc?
Just, I mean, for the all dispatch calls for service, that went up 24%.
Yeah.
Um, and they're not all tickets, I mean, these are calls, so.
Those are calls, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and they're not resulting in charges or tickets or anything, it's just for service or questions or.
Yeah, it's, well, this is, I mean, a call for services, you know, you call the police and they come to your house or, you know, or they, they're over a, a crime report.
Okay.
I mean, that covers everything except for self-initiated traffic stops, so that, I mean, that is the calls that the officers are receiving. And we're really at the, at the numbers that we were at, um, that almost back five years ago at this point. You know, our, um, the last three years have been lower and, and now we're back up to the, to the place we were before the pandemic.
My last question is not on your report, but it's just a question, because I mean, I see we have two narcotics charges, et cetera, we got a couple of other things. Destruction of property went from seven to 12 this month. Can I ask, because I've called in twice now, the village is fabulous, about thinning up graffiti. That's near my house, big, big open field and it's around garbage cans. And I can't tell if it's gang graffiti or not.
It's.
It's been twice that it's been claimed.
I would say no, it's not, it's, it's.
We read gallons of graffiti in the park this year, not a single one's been gang related.
It's not, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a swirly lines, it's not, you know, swear words and stuff, but I mean, and it's only, it's only on two sides of it. Not the third that you'd be able to see from 72. So the village has been great about thinning it up, but I mean, that's my first thing is, are we starting to have?
We don't actually, we have the property.
Property.
Modern. And in that case, we, like, we just had to remind them of their responsibility and it wasn't like they were trying to show it their responsibility. We just had to remind them and then they just went right over the next day and take care of it. Uh, but I would say, no, I, I, I didn't see, I, I looked at that myself, I didn't see any signs of gang.
Okay.
It's, it's kids for sure, but it's.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I did want to, it's not really a question, but I just wanted to say thank you, I commend you and your staff for getting the prescription medication drop off setup out there. I've heard extremely good feedback throughout the community that there's something available. And just how tough it was before then, for them to kind of, where can I take prescriptions? So thank you for that, it's been well received by members.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Next account payable personnel. We have a big number, the smallest number we'll see all night. $40 stops to rush through, do we have any questions about the $40 rush through? Or can I entertain a motion to approve the $40 shortage? At first.
Seconds.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments? Ms. Secretary of General, please.
Ms. Paul Street, aye. Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Spohd. Aye. We should pass five.
Now we have a slightly bigger number, $457,555.27. You have any questions? No question.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Page 147.
Line 47.
$800 for code enforcement services?
Been a lot of violations that have been reported this season.
So it's $800 charge?
It's for, say, those code enforcement inspectors to get a work.
Okay.
So code enforcement's not just included with our contract, we actually have to pay every time.
I thought, didn't we, weren't you, are designated code enforcement officer?
I, it takes a certification that I don't have.
So are you, so as an example, um, when we had a leak downtown, right, that was a, that was a code violation, product right of building code violation, did we just?
Yeah, I don't think violations, uh, issued in that case, these, these are cases more like call for S's. Yeah, so there's. Billy, I just feeling pain, uh, we have to write citations, uh, forces, this is a big priority for this part.
Correct.
So when you see money going out there, that means we're doing, we're enforcing.
And in case, in some of these cases, what tickets have been issued and that kind of stuff.
In some cases, but off the taxes, correct? They get the notes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Gary, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular amounts payable and, um, maybe probably seven minutes ago, $457,555.26. And first. The second, any other questions or comments? Secretary of General, please.
Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Spohd. Aye. Mr. Paul Street. Aye. We should pass five.
Board committee report time. Mr. Kelly.
Uh, the BDC canceled this month's meeting, there wasn't a forum for the initial scheduled meeting. And unfortunately, the village hall was not available, uh, for a reschedule, when they were looking to reschedule. Uh, so the decision was made to just cancel the July meeting.
Chris Cole. Uh, Crackfellow and Windmire, they had a crack filler, they rented it for a week. So that's what they've been doing. I know we've cracked it, uh, it's like 1,500 a week.
No, I need to buy.
Oh, 25 to 35, geez.
We have it in the budget for 32, we can't.
They'll prolong our, our street seven years.
That's, that's probably the first piece of reporting we're talking about, the other communities about shared services. I don't know if I recorded back here, but we did have a meeting, our first meeting, shared service.
Hutton, Gilbert, Pingree, Burlington.
I would not recommend going with Hutton. Hutton's got enough money to buy dozens of them. My fear is when you get in with bigger cities, uh, if you actually see how the machine is operated. If it ain't cleaned properly, whoever gets it next is going to spend hours cleaning it.
Hutton was not it.
They're not.
I thought, did I say Hutton?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. I know.
He thought we might borrow some equipment, because they have it.
You need to clean it.
Uh, budget. Public relations is absent. Tonight, uh, this weekend's street dance, right, exciting, downtown, there's going to be a laser light show, I guess, that should be pretty exciting. All right, so we've got, uh, public works coming out to shut the three lights off for a day, like intentionally.
Lights will be off from eight to nine, or no, from nine to ten.
So it'd be kind of a neat thing, we're going to take advantage of the festival block, it'll be the first, uh, event on the festival block. We'll do that, so it's coming down this weekend. New business or other announcements?
I, I just have one question. Kim, is this the place to talk about where we're at with, uh, of course, the cases that are pending in court, EOC court?
That kind of thing. An executive section trust and post.
Okay, well, we probably should.
There's really no update right now, um, I could speak to the mayor about that today, we probably will have an update for you in two weeks. So either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay.
And then we will schedule it so that we can go into executive to talk about it, right?
Just one thing for, if maybe it's new business, for consideration of the future agenda items, bring back the conversation of identifying potential financing ways for public works building. That was in the budget discussions and then we are going to come back with different alternative conversations. And so just in a future meeting, coming up, because we just bought another snowplow, we've got another one that's supposedly going to be coming by 2035. And then we need to place the football, so.
And right, right now, what we're doing is focusing on the building itself and the design. The process of selecting the contractor, and then understanding what the cost is going to be. And that, that's becoming a complicated process, to be honest. But this legislation just this year, or covered as it's signed yet, we will, restricting our abilities in certain types of construction. So we, we're working through that, Jimmy. We're also meeting with contractors, so we'll be coming back with recognition of the contractor, without, without a price yet. And we'll be working with that contractor to develop the scope and the cost. At that point, then we should start talking about. Um, now, we, we have been planning, though, um, we're going to ask you to have a budget be probably this fall, to meet the floor, and let us, let us talk about forecasting cash, which we can speak directly. Of the surplus at the end of the year, large capital expenses that we had this year and what's coming. So we'd like to do that this fall.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, question on new business, although it's not new business, we talked about the lion, the ancient lion's population. Something, the street festival, which is the bike rack. We talked about, uh, being, being, and you're not going to tell the village what they should accomplish on there. They just thought of accommodating just two, I think we didn't see enough for the village, so. Dave Starrett had sent me some photographs of, uh, different kinds of bike racks and we also saw. I think you had with circle. Haven't come to conclusion yet of what exactly the issue was, I didn't get the information.
I'm sorry, I had trouble.
Sorry, I didn't get the information on the, the bike rack that we talked about, circular.
Right.
And the fact that the lion club thought, maybe accommodating two bicycles for the whole village wasn't quite enough. So that's just a comment.
So is, is that a comment or a question?
No, it was, it was a comment from the, the lion club when we talked about, making a presentation, they said, well, how much?
We, we only have room for, so first, first of all, there's a large bike rack by the library, right?
Yeah, we talked about, right?
The only other place where we'd like to have one is that there, and there's not much room, there's on the garden area, south wall. Cause people going to lots of garden area. And I think that'd be a good place for a bike rack and a skateboard rack, which is what was recommended. So, but if the lion's club doesn't want to buy that, then they shouldn't buy it.
No.
But we, we, we don't have room for a ten bike, bike rack there to go parallel with the building.
No, the comment just was, is, is accommodating two bicycles. Sound like it's a good idea for the whole village.
Yes, that's what, that's what we would like to have.
That was just a question, it was ours.
Okay.
And, uh, if we can get some confirmation of what the, what the amount is, then we'll get it processed through the.
Okay.
For last one.
I thought I'd sent you all that.
No, we, we're going to follow up on, on that.
Okay, you're adjourned.
Seconds.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, very much.
Wow.
You did a great job.
Oh, I know, it's like this hundred and twenty thousand.
Well, the questions about lots of. We got, we got to try and wash out of that.
Is it something related to future requirements? But Mark, Mark's thing satisfied, but that was. Yeah. It is, yes. It's.
I know.
It's, it's. It's, it's, it is more of.
Time.
That's, that's the right. Yeah, we know what to do.